Dan, do the roll call please.
Ted?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Bryce?
Here.
Tucker? Rick?
Here.
You've all received a copy of last month's May eleven minutes. If there are any corrections or additions, if not, they will stand as presented. There is no old business that will move right into new business. First item is a site plan review for Scott Kalina. Kalina, I'm sorry. Seeks plant commission's approval to open a furniture restoration business, Baltic wood chopping and restoration behind Hex Restaurant, six ten East Park Avenue. We tabled this last month, so I need a motion to remove that from the table.
I make that motion.
No second. I have a motion in a second. Dan, if you would, roll call.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Okay, Scott, if you'd come up and kind of tell us what you want to do.
Pardon me one moment, please. I'm having a very difficult time hearing the board off the Zoom part of the meeting.
Dan, how about there? Can you hear that?
That's better. Thank you.
Yeah, please make sure you get close to your mics when you speak.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear? Speak up. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, that should be.
Okay.
Go ahead.
What was your question?
Just tell us what you want to do.
Um, I had, I restore furniture and I built custom furniture and I got the, there's a garage behind Hex Restaurant. And I took and cleaned it, one, one of the bay out, the other bay I'm going to eventually use it for, for storing furniture. Maybe down the road I might get into doing upholstery work too. I'm not sure down there, but I'm, but I was stripping redo furniture and build cabinet and custom, cabinets and custom furniture.
Okay. Uh, any questions from the board?
Well, first of all, I would like to know, um, I assume you use, uh, equipment to make these pieces of furniture?
I've got, I got some saws and stuff like that.
Has, uh, are they loud? Do they make a lot of noise?
No. The, the, like the table saw I have is probably my, maybe my loudest and, um, they, it's just a regular table saw. I don't have any big cleaners or, or anything two twenty or, or anything like that. And if it was a little bit loud, the thing that, that, um, would kind of back, back with where I'm at, you couldn't hear it because of the air compressor or the air can, or the, uh, like the air compressors and stuff like that that's going on over at the restaurant. Cause I sit like right behind the restaurants. So, so no one's, I mean, I've got an open, there's an open lot behind there too. So there's no.
Okay. So it's not close to like that Springfield Road properties?
No.
It's on, you know?
It, it's right behind.
Right behind Hex?
Right, right behind Hex Restaurant.
Okay.
And I was even, there was a, a gentleman that lives up above Hex, up above the restaurant, um, the owner's brother. And I was even asking him if I make any noise. He goes, no. And I work right now, I, I have all flexible hours. So there's times I'm like, right, as soon as we're done here, I'm going back down there and do some more work.
Thought you'll be leasing from Tom then?
Yeah. We've got an agreement set up and then there's some furniture that he wants redone too and doing some of his work.
My only concern with the board is it R one to the rear. And from what I could see, if I'm right, twelve eighty-two point oh two fourteen A, carpenter shop or upholstery shop, it's a conditional use. And it has to be, the way I read it, fifty feet from the lot line with a street in that, in that right away. And, and I don't think that fits.
Can you elaborate a little?
Let me, let me find it. See if the board agrees with me. Twelve eighty-two oh two fourteen. Says the following uses may be conducted not closer than fifty feet from any R district where a C four district abuts upon the R district, but is separated from such district by a street. Width of the street may be considered as part of the required setback. Item A is carpenter cabinet upholstery, sheet metal plumbing, heating, roofing, air conditioning, sign painting, painting and other similar establishments.
So sixty feet from what point or what?
Fifty feet from the back lot line. But if I read it right, and if it says.
Read to like the back fence to the, to the building?
Yeah. But it's separated from such district by a street. Well, there's no street back there. You know what I'm saying?
Well, it, there was, there's a street in front of Hex Restaurant.
Right. But, but our district, the residential district.
Yeah.
Is behind you.
Okay.
Yeah. And I, I don't know.
Cause there, there's privacy there. There's enough privacy and there's a privacy fence up that I won't, I'm not bothering in any of the neighbors.
I understand that.
Okay.
I mean, it's just.
Could you give me the last one? It's twelve eighty-two, what else?
Twelve eighty-two. Oh two, oh two, fourteen.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah.
That being, that if it is separated by a road, the road.
The road counts. Yeah, counts in the, the way I read it.
But if it's not separate, well, I'm saying it could be, it doesn't have to be separated by a road. If it is, the road counts as part of the.
You, you listen. C four district abuts upon any R district, but is separated from such district by a street. To me, that reads that there has to be a street there. Is separated. The width of the street may be considered as part of the required setback.
That, that's why I, I'm not reading it that there has to be a street.
I'm reading that there's, it's fifty feet either way. If it's, if there's a street, then it can be used.
That's why I asked the question.
Okay. I, I, I've read it several times.
I know.
You know, I think I had my wife read it.
Could we do this or?
Go ahead.
Would, could you give me the opportunity to, to work back there and if it is a, starts becoming a complaint with the neighbors and stuff like that?
Well, I, that's, well, let's wait a second. If, if you're right up against near the restaurant.
Yeah.
Did you mark off how far it was from where you're working back to that privacy fence?
No, I, I, cause I didn't realize this rule.
Cause I asked the question that way because I think it might be fifty feet.
Or I know years, years ago, Hex owned Clear Springfield Road, didn't they? But that was years ago.
Right. Okay.
And, and I don't know how deep they go from, from the garage. And of course, your garage door faces Hex, right?
Right.
So the noise will travel.
Yeah. And I, I've got like parking agreements with Tom where I park off to the side. So I'm not in his way. But like in the evenings, like when I go down there, I'll park close to the building and stuff like that. I've also been working hard at trying to keep the place up, like clean that up, area up a little bit more. So it's looks a little bit more presentable.
Okay, but the question's the fifty feet. Is, didn't you say there's another building behind your building going toward Springfield?
There's, there's like a privacy fence and then there's like woods and then other buildings, but there, but there's, it, it's more like an open field. I can measure and let you guys know, but.
Just in my mind, I'm thinking it's close to fifty feet.
I would think it would be okay.
I think it would be a.
I think it's a deep lot, but I don't know.
Did you, did you look at it?
Looks, it looks larger than fifty feet.
I, I think it's bigger than fifty feet. So I will make a motion to approve this site plan.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion in a second. Dan, if you would, call roll.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
You're set.
Okay.
Have at it. Make some solace.
Good luck, Scott. Look forward to doing businesses each night.
Okay. Can you count to ten? Let me see. Can you still count to ten? Good.
Cause you're a carpenter.
You're, you work for the wood.
Nice. Second, I'm, item B is a site plan review for Kristen Clayton and Sebastian. Comcheck seeks the plant commission's approval to proceed with plans to open a restaurant and bar, Sabes on the square at eight South Main Street. You'd like to come up and.
So yeah, we've both been in the restaurant business about twenty-five years ourselves, working for a couple of different local places and we're just.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, we've both been in the restaurant business about twenty-five years each, um, looking to just go out on our own and start, um, a smaller little restaurant, focusing on seafood, steaks, burgers, um, but like at an affordable price.
Any questions from the board?
Well, um, why do you think that's a good location for you?
Um, we've seen the development going around, um, forming a corridor. It's been a great place. Um, we've talked about a couple of different, well, antique stores and restaurants, around the town and there's a lot of foot traffic and it would be helpful.
I'm excited. I snuck over to crane room over the weekend. I'm excited. If you put a steak like that on the table, you won't have any problem.
Chairman, one question I have here. Um, I know you guys are really in the process and coming here to the planning commission meeting tonight. But there has been a lot of, you know, restaurants around our community and frankly, in the entire state right now that are struggling for work. Have you all reached out to potential employees for your restaurant? Should this go through? And, um, anything else that, uh, you guys have been evaluating through that process?
Um, yes. I mean, we both currently are still working at our current positions and have quite a few very loyal employees. Um, I've had a couple of girls who've been with me about fifteen years, um, that would be willing to, to make the move with me. Um, and with the place not having more than, you know, seventy-five seats, um, not looking to have too many employees. Um, and I've kind of always worked with a low labor to begin with.
Great. Thank you. Anything that brings jobs is good by me.
Oh, and you plan to hopefully start for November-ish area?
That is the goal. Um, we're waiting on a liquor license, um, and a couple of other small things that we want to make sure in place before we go, you know, forward.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approved as submitted.
I'll second that motion. I have a motion in a second. Dan, if you call the roll, please.
Bryce?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, you related to Jean.
Downtown.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Are you related to Jean Clayton? Are you relating to Jean Clayton?
That's my uncle.
Uncle, okay. My son played hockey with his son.
Oh, okay.
Good luck. I won't have to go so far for a steak next time. Item C, a replat, Curtis Tharp representing First Christian Church, thirty-nine Cherry Street would like a plant commission's approval to replat lots one and three.
Curtis actually wasn't able to be here today. I'm Zach Ray, um, our executive minister at First Christian Church.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Zach. What did you say your last name is?
Ray, R A Y.
R A Y, thank you. Z A C K?
Uh, C H.
C H, okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I have, um, a lot of maps here for you.
Just to pass them out, be fine. We'll pass them down.
Uh, our plan is to, we have a large piece of property there. Uh, we don't plan to develop that piece of property. Eventually our plan is to relocate to a different, to, uh, out there near Firestone Farms where that development is happening. By the moment, we're just selling that land, uh, it, it's part of a capital campaign. Our plan is to split that portion into three lots. Uh, the lot that the church is sitting on, the lot that is the field, uh, between the church and the library, uh, and the lot that the parsonage sits on.
Okay. So lot three is a parsonage?
Uh, the small house. I accidentally hinted at all of them. Yeah, the, uh, the lot off to the side.
Okay. One on the alley.
Yes.
Okay.
That is, uh, yeah, that's lot three is the parsonage and lot two is what we're selling to the, uh, intending to sell to the library.
Okay.
That's under contract. Uh, we, I don't believe we're under contract until we get approved here.
Okay.
Uh, but that is, has been voted approved of.
And, um, but the church does continue to want to stay in Columbia?
Yes, we're staying in Columbia.
Okay.
Uh, are, we have two options, neither of which we have agreements on, uh, because we want to make sure we have the finances lined up before we move forward. At the old golf course across from, uh, I forget the name of the, the, the home on Park.
Was spring five?
Yes. Yeah. And, and also, uh, the, the prime candidate that we're hoping to work out would be, um, right there where that development is happening, current, uh, where they're currently developing the, uh, there's a, there's a senior living center going in and there is a, um, I think the senior living center and a, uh, sports center. On, is that fourteen or seven? I get those.
Yeah, okay.
Seven and.
Seven.
Heck, yeah.
Seven and heck, that's true.
Any other questions?
I move that we approve, uh, the replats of lots one and three as submitted.
I'll second that motion. I have a motion in a second. Dan, call roll please.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, you're good to go.
Thank you.
Item D is a replat. Matt Miller would like the plant commission's approval to replat his property at four sixty-nine Firestone Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Matt, uh, you're obviously here for a replat.
Yes, sir.
Looks like you're building one new house.
Yeah, we got one going on now, yes.
Okay.
Um, and we're gonna, we'd like to, you know, make another lot there so I can build another house. My son's contemplating doing it. I'm not sure if that's gonna happen, but I want to be ready for it.
Okay. Okay. Is there any questions from the board? I don't have any questions. It looks like it all fits and works for me. Could I have a motion?
So move. I'm going to move to, uh, approve as submitted.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Dan, if you would.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Okay, that was easy.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You too.
Item E, we have a replat. Mark Hudson representing First Christian Church would like the plant commission's approval to replat lot three at twenty-three North Elm Street.
Thank you. Uh, I'd love to be there in person, but a couple of you know why I'm not there in person. It seems like June is a month I decide to do things. Not much fun, but in any event, I'm here on behalf of the church and what we are doing. Few years ago, we entered into a land contract with Jennifer Pike to actually sell her the house that she had been renting from us and she's now been living there. I'm not sure exactly how many years. When we did that, we knew that we would eventually need to replat that lot because in the past, we had replatted lots two and three. So we're, at this point, we're replating lots two and three again. Jen is actually purchasing lot two, but part, the reason for this replat is to make sure that she has what we had all agreed, you know, years ago that she would have upon the purchase. And what she is doing is she's completing the land contract right now. So it's time for us to complete the replat and that's why we're here to see.
Any questions from the board?
I have no questions.
Can I have a motion?
I move to approve this, uh, this, uh, replat of lot three at twenty-three North Elm.
I have a motion in a second. Dan, if you would.
Scott?
Yes.
Scott, your mic's blinking red. I don't know if it's.
Yes.
There you go. Now. Yes, now.
Now it's green.
Yes.
Bryce?
Yeah, it's green.
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Good to go, Mark.
All right. Thank you.
Item F, we have a site plan review. Josh Don representing Birdfish Brewery Company LLC seeks the plant commission's approval to proceed with plans to build a patio at its one forty East Park Avenue location. All yours, Josh.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for, uh, for seeing us this evening. Um, uh, a few months ago, we were here asking for a temporary extension of our patio, as you know. And we made, um, a promise to come back here when the mandates were lifted for social distancing and, uh, everything with the state. To, you know, tell you our plans and possible future permanent patio on the side of the building, uh, which is what we're presenting here today. As you know, um, this was recent, very recent change. It was very abrupt. Obviously we couldn't build the permanent patio in just a few weeks' time. So, um, we wanted to present our ideas, uh, potential layout. So, um, you can see in this, in these two drawings, if you driven by our brewery on East Park Avenue, you can notice the two tents in the parking lot, which helped us, um, through the winter. We had sides on the tents and tent heaters. So we're able to accommodate customers, um, that would prefer to be outside in tents. So wanted to get out a little bit. Um, and then we've noticed, um, this year the tents actually added a little bit of, you know, shade, uh, for the patio for the summer. So we left, we decided to leave those up through the, uh, you know, hopefully through the end of the year until, until it gets pretty cold. I will, we'll plan to take those down, which is why kind of presented two different, two different maps here is spring, fall, spring, summer, fall. We could see the tents and then just, uh, the winter option. So, um, which has several different locations for the food trucks. So in the winter, obviously it's snowing. People won't walk all the way to the back of the patio. They'd be closer to the front door. So we're, I guess what we're asking for today is, uh, extension on the temporary patio until we can get this, permanent side patio, which you could see to the right, it'll be, and there's, we sent over some pictures, pictured examples, I think. Hopefully everybody got those. So I have some ideas to introduce, uh, a little bit of green, you know, shrubbery and stuff, which will, you know, break up the black building, a black top in the parking lot. Hopefully look very nice. So I guess, you know, we're, we're asking for just a, you know, probably hopefully just a few mon, a couple of months before the end of the summer, we have to have, you know, ideally we like to have it done tomorrow, but, you know, planning.
Yeah.
Material sourcing and everything takes some time, so.
Any questions from the board?
Well, first of, first of all, I would like to say kudos on your signage.
Oh, thank you.
It's fantastic. It all took, huh? It's all took four years. I think it looks beautiful. It's real.
Thank you very much.
Really looks good.
We're happy with it.
And, um, we appreciate your business. Um, I, I just hope, do you feel these changes will help you to continue to stay there?
Yes. I think especially these changes outside, there's still obviously a lot of, a lot of people, we, uh, I'll answer that to us. This, this change and this extension of the patio, we still feel a lot of people want to be outside, you know, still people, there's a lot, a lot of still concerns. People prefer to have a beer outside on the patio rather than inside. And yes, we plan to be in Columbia up front.
Good. That's why I asked the question.
And in that same building, I think. I think there's room for growth. I don't know if Oaks Moving wants to give us any more space, but hopefully one day they, one day give us, give us a little bit more room in the building and we'll, we'll grow with them.
I'll make a motion. We approve the, uh, procession of proceeding with patio, build a patio for Birdfish.
And you're asking for an extension on?
Yeah, extension on the temporary use.
For the temporary use. You'll do that, Scott?
Yes.
Add that extension. I'll second that motion.
I had, uh, again, I went back to the book. And I went through all the saves. Yeah. Of course, when this, all, most of this book was written, there was nothing to say about patios. It wasn't a thing. You didn't go to a brewery or a bar or a restaurant and eat outside. So there's really, I couldn't find a guideline for patio. So, so I guess you're it.
Right. I think, uh, you know, Columbia may be the city of patios now.
Yeah.
Might be, with home says patio and our patio, I think it's two biggest patios in the, in the Chiat County area.
Uh, one thing that I thought then, well, just on my own is, uh, maybe some sort of safety barrier before, between the, a parking parked car and the patio. Just, you know, if something would get bumped into gear or something like that, that was my only thought, you know?
We hope to have actually permanent, like mounted, um, posts in the parking lot, kind of like the front of the patio.
Okay.
Yeah, steel posts.
Okay.
Separated by a wood barrier. So, yeah.
Good question, Ted.
Uh, that was, that was my only thought.
That's a good question.
So we have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second, Dan?
Bryce?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Go at it. Have at it.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck, guys.
Take care.
Next item is item G. Rob Schwartz seeks plant commission's approval to replat lot one at eleven forty-five East Park Avenue.
Hello, everybody.
Hey, Rob.
I'm Rob Schwartz. Good to see you. Good to see you. So.
Go ahead.
Yep, we just have, um, trying to replat that house eleven forty-five onto its own lot. When I purchased all the property at the auction, um, it all got put on one parcel after that. So gotta break that house back off and it seems to make most sense in this way. Tried to stay kind of uniform with coming down East Park Avenue. Most of setbacks are about a three hundred foot, which is typical of the commercial coming down that road. So I just asked Chamberlain to try to make the best sense out of making that a. So I just asked Chamberlain to try to make the best sense out of making it a smaller lot, and then, uh, just leaving us some more opportunities for the rest of the property.
So are you east of Nick Bogdan?
This would be east of Nick.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second. Dan, if you would please.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
There you go.
Good luck.
Alright, thank you.
Good luck, Rob.
I have a Malar here, is this for?
Our next item, item H is a replat. Dave Powers, representing Robert May, seeks the planning commission's approval to replat lots five and six across Court Street.
Thank you, uh, Mr. May presently owns a lot that fronts on Cross Street. Lot has a width of approximately, uh, ninety-five feet, uh, the depth on this lot is almost five hundred and forty feet, if my memory serves me correctly. He proposes splitting that lot and adding the split off sections to the two lots five and six that are on Cross Court Street. He has contracts with, uh, on all three properties to sell them, uh, go ahead and go through with the flat if it's approved by, by any commission.
So you want to split five and six off of?
Actually, lot four runs from Cross Street clear back to city property, and we're splitting off, uh, two little sections, one section's going to lot five, one section's going to lot six.
Okay.
Then four will be its own lot.
Okay. So, so four is a hundred and fifty-seven feet and change, and then you'll add, add those to the other, add that?
That's correct.
So, okay, so it'll be deeper on Cross Court?
Correct.
Okay.
And all, all this land is vacant land, there's no, no, there are no buildings on any of this, except the houses towards the front of the lots.
Okay.
Does he plan to put any buildings on those lots?
Uh, he's selling those to the current property owners, I don't know what their plans are.
Okay.
I mean, they, I know they want it for just additional acreage, uh,
Okay.
actual plans on.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move that we, uh, approve the replat of lots five and six on Cross Court Street.
I'll second that motion. Dan, if you would please.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott? Bryce?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, Rob, you got here just in time. Don't have to follow this, you're on time.
Big kids' baseball games, coaching, I got one more week and I'm, I got my life back. Yeah, so Rob Straher, uh, from APL Properties.
You'll have to get close to the mic.
Sorry, Rob Straher from APL Properties and Master Plan Builders, good evening to everybody.
Okay, if we're looking for a replat.
Yeah. I think it'll stay. All right, yes, we have, uh, two replats here, I'm not sure which ones first, whether it be, uh, the old Sabre one?
Old Sabre is first, yes.
Old, old Sabre, we're doing a few different things here, um, one is there's actually a replat of lot number one, creating, uh, new lot fifty-seven, and, uh, we're actually combining, uh, lot forty with lot forty-nine, um, I have a home buyer that's buying both, uh, parcels and building a house on, on both together. So there's a, basically two four-acre homesites we're creating from lot number one, um, and new lot fifty-six is coming out of lot fifty-two.
Who's on first?
Yeah, there's a little bit going on here, um, um, yeah, so there's, there's, uh, um, as you know, a lot of interest in, in the area, so it's been a, been a busy month. So new lot fifty-seven, just to, you know, clear something up, which is kind of nice, it has forty-foot of frontage on Danbury Way, and so does lot forty, so they're just, they'll have, uh, they're all pre-tapped and ready to go, utilities are actually brought back about, uh, three hundred feet on the property, ready to go for each, each of those sites.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Now second.
Okay.
Dan? If you would please.
Scott?
Yes.
Your mic's blinking red again. There we go.
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Okay, now the Back Bay. Yeah, so in the Back Bay, um, we're down to, um, pretty much two lots, uh, that's left on Back Bay Drive, um, this property, uh, to be honest, wasn't for sale, and, uh, one of the residents in the Back Bay approached me and wanted to purchase lot forty-five, so, uh, we created, um, lot, um, a, a larger lot, because he wants to build a larger home uh, on both lots twenty-nine and forty, old, a, a piece of lot twenty-nine and all of lot forty-five, he's gonna take both lots.
So twenty-nine and forty-five will be combined?
Sort of, th- th- there's still three point five acres left of lot twenty-nine.
Okay.
So, and, 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 I'll, I'll maintain the ownership of, there's going to be just, um, uh, one, two, three, there's gonna be nine, no, ten, uh, single, uh, units that are, will be built on lot twenty-nine, three are currently under construction.
Okay.
Rob, this forty-five is, is the corner and the next?
It is a corner, it is the, uh, the corner of Spinnaker.
Yep.
Um, and you'll see, I mean, we provided, uh, uh, there's, um, um, a utility easement along, so, so just to, to be clear, lot forty-five owns no pavement whatsoever of Spinnaker Drive.
Right.
Okay, that easement is on old lot forty-one, or lot forty-one, there is a utility easement that I did put on lot forty-five, there's twenty-five foot, there's water there and electric. And so, um, uh, there's a hydrant, and, and I didn't want any confusion, um, with, you know, so I figured we'll just put the easement directly on the plaque, so there's no, there's no confusion for everybody to see it, versus it just being in some type of description somewhere.
Right.
So, um, the gentleman that is purchasing lot forty-five is just, for record, is already a Columbia resident, um, moved into Columbia, I believe, from Salem and, and is, uh, gonna be, uh, building, uh, um, a larger home, so.
I spoke to the gentleman as well, he's.
It's always, it's always nice to have, um, just good people and as neighbors, and I, I'm a, I'm a neighbor of his as well, so I'm, I'm pretty happy to have.
Just a point of order, you, you said Spinnaker, you mean Windjammer?
No, it's, it's a corner of Spinnaker.
Okay.
Drive and Back Bay Drive.
Okay, gotcha.
So Spinnaker is a private street, um, but there's a little confusion as far as the easement's of Spinnaker, so this property is, does not touch any pavement whatsoever of Spinnaker.
Okay, this, the front of the house will, will conform with everything on Back Bay Drive, basically, the front of the.
Yes, the front of the house will be part of the Back Bay Homeowners Association, um, and will, um, for all intents and purposes, yeah, will blend in very nice. So, hey, the home that he wanted to build was a little bit too large for forty-five, we were having trouble fitting it, so, um, um, he, he will have a little bit of excess of a side yard that'll, you know, will have a, a very nice side yard, so.
Okay, I'll, um, move to replat lots twenty-nine and forty-five and Back Bay at Airhead Link.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion in a second. Excuse me, Dan, if you'd call a roll, please.
Bryce?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes. There you go.
Thank you for your, uh, time this evening, it's good to see everybody in person. Officer Derrick.
Yeah, go by milkshake.
They're, they're in Austintown, so I, so, yeah, so I'm just gonna let them be, but, uh, thank you, see you guys then.
See you, Rob.
Next item's item J, site plan review, for Joseph Benedict, owner of Factory Forty-Six Tavern, one-one-one-eight Village Plaza, seeks a planning commission's approval to build a patio on the northwest corner of the building.
A patio?
A patio.
Another one.
Hitting me?
We're done, no more patios.
Thanks, last, uh, let me in last minute, I appreciate that. So.
Second the wrong guy.
Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, yeah, pretty straightforward, uh, we want to just extend and put a patio in, in the corner. I would think that is the north corner.
Yeah, northwest.
Northwest corner of the building.
Yeah. But from your, from your, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Is, is that, is that, um, dumpster right there now, is that about?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's gonna, going to get moved.
Back down east towards?
It's, yeah, it's gonna go the end of the parking lot uh, north. So there, there's a, there are other building back there, and then there's a parking spot, it's gonna go back in that corner all the way. Um, yeah, there's not a picture that, where that's going, but.
Yeah, we're good.
Did you, um, what's your thought, give us a brief review of what patio's gonna look like?
Okay, uh, basically, where this is gonna be a s- a cement poured pad.
Okay.
Uh, railings to match, all the railings that are on the building now, we'll try to match those up as close as possible. And it's just, uh, like Josh was saying, it's, uh, it's one of those things right now, it's very tough, people still do, they just want to be outside and, uh, with everybody having patios in town, I kind of need this to compete. You know, so it's, you know, but, uh, there, uh, the sun sets down here in the west, the only thing that I'm, I'm gonna look at is some kind of sunblock, maybe, I mean, it comes crashing in.
Yeah, late in the day.
So that's something I'm looking at, I'm looking at either, uh, they make a, like a screen, you know, like a, a roll-up screen, or, um, I'm thinking maybe even a wall, make it look like the front of the of the plaza, uh, couple ideas, you know, just something like that, but basically, if we get the patio poured, I mean, we get that, deal with the sun for now, I just, and stages, I just want to get first part, you know, ready to go.
Um, Joe, one question, um, your door now.
Mm-hmm.
Will you serve from that door on this patio, or there'll be another?
What I'd like to do, you can get to the patio walking up the ramp, the sidewalk that's there, and you can go right onto the patio. From inside, I'm not gonna be able to see that, so what I want to do is put like a French door in the building uh, right there going on to the patio.
Like kind of where your stage is at now?
Yes, right there, kind of put either French doors or some kind of door, so that way, if I'm behind the bar, I can see everything that's going on out there. Plus, it's, uh, we can open up and serve a lot easier.
Right. You're not doing a bar or anything out there?
No.
No.
So, so this patio's gonna be the same elevation as your, your in, floor inside, okay?
Yeah, 'cause the ramp comes up.
Alright.
Where you go in.
Alright.
It's gonna match that height.
Okay.
All the way around.
When do you plan to start this project?
I, uh, talked to Eric Smith, he's gonna do the work for me, so as soon as he is ready, he told me he could be ready here this month, hopefully the middle to end. But, you know, I mean, he's busy like everybody else, I'm just, I said, well, as soon as, you know, you put me on the list, as soon as you can get to it, um, you know, we'll go from there, it'll probably be done when the snow's flying.
Yeah, yeah, ribbon cutting, ribbon cutting in the blizzard.
What are you gonna do, I just, you know, the first part, just getting it, so, you know, I, I, uh, I'd have to really talk to him to see when he has, you know, plan to start.
That's fine, that's good.
Okay. You're not gonna, you're, doing that is not even gonna really impose on the, the, uh, parking or?
Oh, not at all, because, uh, I mean, right now.
As far as the timing goes, there's, there's no problem with that.
Yeah, the, right now, there's no, no parking, it's gonna come straight, even with the, uh, walkway, and you can't really park there, there's a dumpster and a wall, a big brick wall there now, so, yeah, it's.
I make a motion, we approve this as submitted for Joe to build a patio.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, there it is.
I have a motion in a second, Dan, if you'd call a roll, please.
Rick?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
That's it, you're good to go.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck, Joe, good luck, Joe.
Alright, thank you.
And Renee.
Well, that emptied the room. Any council comments, or commission comments, I'm sorry.
Well, it's another great day for Columbia.
I think so, yeah.
Say that. Still got a lot of things going on, I think it's great, it's really interesting to see how the competition, now we're the patio town.
Yeah, like I, like I said, I, I went through the book, and the book was wrote long ago enough that there's nothing about a patio in there, so.
You know, um, say, ten years ago, five years, ten years ago, you know, there was no more than a handful of fast food restaurants and maybe a couple of sit downs in town. And you realize how many in the next year, there's gonna be, how many more eateries are gonna be available, new eateries, nice eateries, probably.
It's unbelievable.
It is, it really is.
I tell you what, if this place goes up one square, you're gonna find a mistake.
And I think adding one to the downtown, you know, it's gonna be great, it's gonna save the downtown, and it's really great to see that happening.
And I, I don't know where, I don't, I don't think we have any local state paving projects, we did them last year, didn't they, both, both the state routes? Gonna be doing one sixty-four north between right eight and the. Yeah, but I, I just gonna say, last, last Friday, you know, obviously, there's some congestion, there's gonna be more congestion.
Oh, yeah.
But it, it's, it's part of the, part of the territory, you know, and it, and it's semi-centrally located right there at the crossing of Market and, and Sa- or fourteen.
Yeah.
You know, and seven and fourteen's gonna be busy anyways, but the, uh, that extension out there is handled nicely, I believe, I don't see any major chokebacks like there used to be out.
Right.
Out there, seven and fourteen.
Right.
You know, things move very nicely out there.
Yeah.
So.
The, the bridge opened today.
Yeah, the bridge.
Newcastle.
Newcastle. That's, Crane Room's nice, yeah, I like it.
Yeah.
What's that?
Crane Room. He's the executive chef at the Crane Room in Newcastle.
That was, that's very good.
Um, I, I had a question, the, the groundbreaking on the in the township portion on the left side of, on the west side of seven. That's, that's being annexed in right now? That's, that's being annexed in right now? Oh, is it? Yes, that, that, uh, is gonna be annexed in. We're in the process of doing that. We gave them CRA to come. They're just, uh, provide, you know, starting the pad and the, uh, utilities. And we're gonna meet at the end. Everything's in parallel. It's twenty-five acres. Can you divulge what's going there or no? Yeah, we've already.
It's already been here.
Yeah, we've already been, yeah. It's been here. Oh, yeah. Well, I, I see they've broken ground. Well, I mean, they're, they're prepping the lot. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yep. Super. I have no idea. Yeah, that's what, that's what I meant, if you knew what it was, what they were putting in there. We know what's going in at the one section there of the first five acres. There's another twenty acres. We have no idea.
The only thing that's come to planning commission is that sport or whatever, training facility or whatever that came to planning commission. That's the only thing so far.
Well, and then on, between, between Homestead and, uh, Prima, I guess, or Ver mercy.
Right.
That's, that's taken off and we approved that, of course.
Yeah.
A while back. Be nice.
Okay. Any public comments?
Congratulations on being so fast.
Hey.
We are lucky.
I'll just note one thing, that we're gonna continue the meetings like this. They'll, they'll look like this in the future. Uh, we may get a little better at it, but, um, you know, the public will always be able to, um, you know, view from afar. Not sure that, uh, we'll be able to continue voting from afar with the current, um, regulations allowing us to do that, dropping off July first. But, uh, at least other people could if, if they had to. And we'll always have an audience out there watching it live.
Very good. Well, there's only one more thing to do. Have a motion to a draw. So moved. There we go.